City of Galton Council Meeting. From March eighth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Ketchel, would you do the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overtin.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Do the approval minutes for the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Public recognition, anyone that'd like to come up and speak, this is the time you can do it.
Bob Meola, four-two-five Paisley Way, Gallatin, Tennessee, have only one thing to say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one God, one nation, visible with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, please bless this group and bless this gallery who came with their troubles to bring to this group. And may they listen and listen to God before they make decisions on anything that these people bring forward. We need your help. We want your help. And we're not against you. We're all Gallatans. We love you. Please, listen. Amen.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Eric Jackson, one-twenty-four Mimosa Drive here in Gallatin. I just want to take just a few moments to personally thank this council for your approval of what First Baptist recommended through Deacon Charles Brinkley in the naming of that street. That you know how grateful I am to be a part of this community, pastor of their church and First Baptist, which has been a part of this community for almost one-hundred-and-sixty years now. So, it's been honor and just thank you for the work that you do. I know it's difficult trying to actually balance all of the various interests, Mayor Brown, and of course, the partnership we've had over the years. So, we're just grateful to be a witness here in Gallatin. Anything First Baptist can do to help Gallatin even be a greater city and even a greater model, I believe, for many other cities, then we're there to do it. But Deacon Charles Brinkley actually thanked you on behalf of the church on last week. And I wanted to thank you just on behalf of myself as a citizen and as a pastor. And of course, always praying for each of you, that God may continue to lead you in making decisions that are actually good for Gallatin. So, God bless you.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
And thank you for all you do and all that your church does. You have an amazing congregation. So, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, council. Good evening, Councilman Fan. I have an email that one of my friends who lives at Christian Towers had emailed to each one of you, but she said that a couple of the emails bounced back. So, I think that there's a couple of you that don't actually have emails with the city, so maybe that's what happened. So, she wanted me to read it. It's about the parking. And she said that the parking situation is turning into a fiasco and asked me to read this to you all. Dear Mayor Brown and City Commissioners, Christian Towers and the Manor have been a part of the Gallatin skyline for many years, so long, in fact, that it is easy to overlook that over two-hundred people live, work, and volunteer in these two buildings. Christian Tower and Manors was initially a generous mission of the Gallatin Church of Christ in partnership with the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The stated goal was to provide safe and affordable housing for Gallatin's lower-income senior population. CT&amp;M has fulfilled this mission for thirty years. This mission is currently in jeopardy. The city has chosen to construct a parking garage on the Church of Christ property on Franklin Street. The parking garage will be on the only available parking area for residents and staff, caregivers, and volunteers of CT&amp;M. While we agree that Gallatin is in need of additional parking for the downtown area, no provision has been made or offered for CT&amp;M parking during construction. Believe it or not, the senior population does drive cars. We drive to church, to the grocery store, to community activities, appointments, local parks, and other places in the community. The residents of CT&amp;M are not the most wealthy people in Gallatin, but we contribute to the economy, support the community, and we vote. There is a good chance that these buildings house your mother, father, grandparent, or other relative as they age. We are asking for suggestions and solutions to help us during the construction phase for the parking garage. We have no place to go. The city has not offered any solutions, to my knowledge. All of us at CT&amp;M feel certain there is a solution if we get our heads together. You are the community leaders. We are asking for your help. Best three guards, Kathy Cooper, one-forty-three East Prince Street. So, that's a real issue, I think, that's starting to really affect them right now since they've started construction. So, I guess that's all for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jevon.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brenda Dotson. I live at six-thirteen Demoss, Gallatin. I've been going back and forth with the parks since the grant until, and also the meeting they had in February about planning, to discuss the meeting at the Civic Center this past February. I have a petition that was left in my mailbox. It says the signatures are to Clearview Recreation Building until there is money for a replacement building. And I have the signatures here. I see the community and the council going back and forth on the building and the community. And our children need a place to play now. Mayor Brown, you asked me to talk to David Brown, and I have, and me and David, we went back and forth. And I asked him, what would it take for athletics to be back, for the center to be open? And he gave me those, and so I got out and we talked, and some of us talked. So, with that being said, Clearview Watch Committee was formed to make sure that the park gets what it needs because somebody has dropped the ball. I'm not sure who that was, but this park has been totally neglected. It hasn't been getting what it's needed. So, the athletics will be back. We have some, I have somebody that's going to run the athletics. The rec center will be open. I have somebody that's willing to do that daily. We have a midterm program ready to be in place. Shalom Zone is ready to meet with you, Mayor Brown, and you, David, and myself to discuss what else could happen. I would like Clearview to be moved to next month's agenda so that we can see what the park has in its budget to help our children now instead of waiting on a grant. And the committee will also meet with the community to see what they would like to have at the rec center so that the community, so that the committee can come back and tell the council exactly what we want at the community center. The committee involves Macio Franklin, he's a Serge mentor, Dewan Manning, he's a middle school coach, Joe Woodard, a business owner, Teresa Dunn, a business owner, and myself as a business owner. And we would like to get together with the community at Clearview Park to discuss what the community would like to have as a rec center. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Public recognition is now over and we'll move on to Mayor's comments.
Thank you. I just have a few things this evening. Let me turn my, very, very quickly. Do you want to mention that Councilman Fan's birthday is coming up on the eleventh? On the twelfth, the Shamrock Run happens. This raises money for the Gallatin Chamber Foundation, which supports our Gallatin educators with grants for unique programs that they present to benefit their students. Encourage you to walk it or run it or just go out and see it and support it with your dollars because it's a fun event and it benefits a great cause in our community. Also, the Saturday evening, Sunday morning, my favorite day of the year, daylight savings time begins. Overnight, I think it's two AM, we spring forward to three AM. And then, do want you to be aware, Ms. Dotson mentioned Shalom Zone. They are having a neighborhood workshop on the sixteenth, and it happens from four until seven PM. And that's where they're seeking feedback from the community about the Shalom Zone and its future. And so, I would encourage you to attend and get engaged over there. I think we talked about last week that we're very excited with new leadership and energy with the Shalom Zone. And I think their board has some grand goals for the future. And if we can all, like you said, work together, we can get great things done. So, that's all for my comments this evening. Thank you.
They will move on to the agenda. First on the agenda is dangerous building. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, council. The first building that I'd like to bring to you is one-twenty-nine Ross Avenue. And if you look through your package, you saw the pictures of the building. The building is deteriorated to a point where it will not be rehabbed for less than fifty percent of its value. It's going to take a bit more. They did, they did answer the certified letter we sent out, and we've had a phone conversation with the owners. And the owners do have intentions to demo that building out. But to keep our records and our paperwork straight, I'd like to move this to a show cause hearing, please.
Most approve the show cause hearing. Ms. McCollum, would you like that to be?
Well, it has to be between ten and thirty days, and that's what I was just looking at.
Just give me a date.
I think we're going to have to do it on March twenty-second. Mr. Stewart, is that too soon? Because we have a fifth Tuesday, and it would be more than thirty days.
Most approved the show cause hearing, March twenty-second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm sorry. We bring it to a council meeting, so we can do it on April fifth. Sorry about that. I was looking at work sessions.
Rephrase mine, April fifth. Yes. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item two, Mr. Stewart Dawson.
Right. Council, this building, we've been dealing with this unit for about five years now. It's not only on South Water off the side of one-oh-nine. It's a double wide there. Has no water, no sewer, unsecured, unsanitary. And it kind of got pushed aside for us to work toward because of the widening project that started there. And I'd also like to take this one to a show cause hearing, please.
Most approve the show cause on April fifth.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All approve. Oh, yeah, that too. I'll oppose. Motion carries.
Mr. Fan, if I may, please, I'd like to address this council about these dangerous buildings and make sure you're aware of how these things operate. If you declare a building dangerous, once we go to a show cause hearing, that then takes sixty days is what's given to that owner. He has sixty days from that point to come in with plans to redo it, to demolish it. Instead of assigning him some days in there, he automatically gets sixty at the time of that declaration. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention again. Thank you very much.
Shouldn't.
And if I could just add to that, in addition to, they do get sixty days to appeal. There are a lot of costs when we have, lately, we've been, Mr. Stewart or his designees have been bringing them, and we've been giving them additional days, and we keep bringing them back and bringing them back. I just want you to know there are costs. These, a lot of these have to be advertised, and those costs have been increasing. And so, Mr. Stewart and I would really like for this council, moving forward, to look at the evidence that's presented that night and determine if it's dangerous or not. If it's dangerous, it's dangerous, and it should be declared dangerous. And they have sixty days to work with Mr. Stewart to do whatever, if you deem it not dangerous, and there's no reason for us to bring it back.
Item number three, discussion of Clearview Clubhouse building, Mr. Brown.
David Brown, Parks and Recreation Director. To start off on the present building, it's my recommendation not to do anything to that building until a new building is placed, ready to be built. It will only take us a few days to get rid of it, to get the pad ready or whatever. So, I'd like to say that that building can be used through this summer because, of course, you know, it's going to take a little time to get the plans or whatever. So, that's the first thing. The second thing I laid on your desk tonight is the floor plans for the first floor of a new eighty-by-sixty building. And you'll see that it has kitchen. It has a small kitchen. It's a catering kitchen, basically. Refrigerators, some microwave, no stove, no burners, no nothing like that. It's just a place that caterers can come in and do their catering. No food can be prepared there. And then, there's storage. There's four restroom, let me count. There's four restrooms on the inside, two on the outside. The two on the outside will be able to be entered from the outside, and the four will be on the inside. And you'll see on the other end, there's a stage and two storage, like a, what we usually do, like at Civic Center, we put all our tables and chairs in there to store them. When we have an event that's using the stage, we move them out, set them up. And then, that gives a room for people to go in there and dress, or if the band warming up or whatever, and then go up on stage. And it'll be with a ramp in there, ADA. All this building will have to be ADA by federal law. So, and there's a little entrance up front that when you come in, there'll be a little reception there to take tickets or whatever we're doing. On the backside of the building, there'll be a twelve-foot-by-eighty-foot porch, covered porch, going out into the park. Now, to do this, we're going to have to set it back off the road. If y'all have been there, the building now is real close to the road. We're going to see if we can set it back enough to get some, and they're not parallel parking, but it's vertical down through, especially the handicap parking there in front of the building. And when we do that, we'll move the playground that's there now, too. Playground there now is usable. It's safe. It has a safe surface. Yes, it is wood chip. That's an approved surface as of now. That's the same thing we have in other parks. We're proposing to, as soon as we can, and get everybody looking at, also put plans on your desk of a playground. That is the playground that we're proposing now to order and put in its proper place below where the building is going to be. When we get that playground installed, we'll start taking the other playground down. That playground is pretty old, still good equipment, still safe, still usable. But once you pull it up, it's hard to use it because it's in concrete, and it's, that plastic stuff, pretty hard to get up, even with a backhoe. I have talked to some of the residents. We've got some programs that we think we can get started. They did ask about, how could we get leagues there? Said, you know, there's only one field, so it's hard to get a league. But the community, the kids in the community, we get them all down there. We'd get two teams, and we'll play games. We'll play soccer. We've got some people that wants to start some of that stuff. That's fine. That's what we've been wanting. We used to have somebody that opened the building when they needed to. That person, you know, moved on. So, that's where we at. I know Councilman Alexander probably go bring up some stuff, and I don't know. This is the footprint that we got. I'd be more than happy to give anybody in the audience a copy. They can take it home today. But before I can do any plans, we've got to settle on what we're going to do. I mean, I can't, if I go do these plans, and everybody's, no, no, it's not big enough. No, it's too small. No, we want eight bathrooms. So, once I get what we're going to do, and Councilman Alexander and I have talked about this plan right here, and he's happy with it. Now, the add-on that I didn't get until here lately is a second floor with a walking trail, a walking track, indoor walking track. My opinion, the cost of that, because of the elevators, and you'd have to add on to the building, the structure of the building would be different. I think we could, if we could use that money wisely down the road later. That, and that would be my recommendation on the building.
I got a question. What, and I know y'all will discuss this, but I know Ms. Dotson, right, came up here. She, I mean, has she seen this?
No, nobody's seen it. That's what I was saying. I'd be more than happy to give it to her.
And that's what I was getting at, is because I think it's a great idea. But I know she said that she wanted to get together with the community, the Shalom Zone, you two, and everybody like that to, you know, and y'all might want to modify this, you know? Like he said, y'all might want six bathrooms or whatever. So, I mean, is that something y'all want to do, to get together to?
We can, but we've been having meetings for three, four years.
I know. I agree. I agree. I agree.
It's not like a new idea coming up. This is something that's been discussed quite some time, even when Mr. James Lawson was living, and Ms. Betty Williams and Brother Brinkley and I, we all went to Nashville to look at a building. And when I bought that particular building back, you know, the council said there was a little too much money to spend at that time. But before I go any further, could I call Mr. Rachel to the financial director? Mr. Rachel, would you explain to the council what the ARPA is, American Rescue Plan Act? And what's that about? How much money we got in it, and could it be used for Clearview Park?
Part of the federal government's attempt to ease some of the burden that the COVID virus pandemic caused. They've sent money out to most all governments. It's the American Rescue Plan Act, American Recovery Plan Act. The city is receiving funds from that. We received some money in November, December, first part of December, November, November. And council voted to use some of that money to give hazard pay to all employees. And at that time, it was discussed waiting to see how to spend the rest of it based on the federal government not issuing the final rule until just recently. But the initial purpose that was stressed through the state government was for that money to be used for water, wastewater, stormwater, infrastructure, broadband, infrastructure. There were, I forget how many categories, nine categories and sixty-something possible uses of that money. One of the items that it could be used on were economically distressed areas. It could be used in qualified census districts for various things. Clearview Park does fall into a qualified census district if council voted to do that. But it's council's vote as to how you want to appropriate that money. So far, the only money that's been appropriated is the money for the hazard pay last fall.
What is the remaining balance that we have in there now, roughly?
I meant to look at that earlier. Four million?
Designated for anything?
Not yet. Again, that council has to vote how that's to be spent.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mr. What I would like to see, what I'm proposing to the council tonight, is that two million dollars from that fund, from the ARPA, be set and earmarked for Clearview Park. And also for us to give Mr. Brown the authority to tear down the existing building at due time. Not tomorrow, but I know we mentioned last time we met that in order for him to tear that building down, he would have to have the blessing of the council. Is that correct?
That was by me, yes.
Okay, so.
I don't think he felt like he had to have the blessing, just if you were going to do it and have nothing there for a period of time. He wasn't comfortable making that determination, and the department had capacity. But I think what you recommended, that we move forward with planning the construction of the new building and tear it down immediately prior, makes good sense. And I don't think this council would have any issue with that.
Well, the building, the building that I'm asking to be built will be pretty, pretty far behind the existing building. In fact, it'd be about where, about where the swimming pool, if anybody know about the swimming pool, the existing pool is now. So, it'd be real far back off the road. And what I would like to see is parking in front of the building instead of on each side, but also add some parking in front of the building. Because I'm afraid if we don't have parking in front of the building, we'll have a lot of on the street parking. But what I would like to get from this council tonight is asking this council if they would be willing to earmark two million dollars from this fund for Clearview Park, and we use it as we get to it. But at least we have the money there while it's there before it's earmarked for something else. And then, to give Mr. Brown the authority, other permission, to tear the building down whenever it's deemed necessary. What do you all think?
Do we think? Do we think this building will be two million dollars?
Maybe not, but I'd rather have that in there to make sure we have enough to do it. With the rising cost now, it may be more. I don't know, you know? Prices are constantly going up. Gas is constantly going up, and I don't foresee the prices dropping, coming down. But with the four, with the money that we already have, we have enough now to do playground equipment, right, Ms. Brown? This money mainly be earmarked for the building itself and the drawing, the prints and all that, you know, getting approval for that. And plus, there are people that have committed to me about donating as well. But I think, excuse me, I think we have to get started on doing something. So, while we have that money available, I would ask the council if they would pull out two million dollars, earmarked strictly for Clearview Park while it's not been designated for anything, and give Ms. Brown permission, if we have to, to tear that building down. And if the event, when you do tear it down, if we need to put some porta potties out there, we can until we complete the other building. But I don't want, you know, I don't want the building to tow down like right away. We can use it. But my thing is, if we could use it, how can we have not been using it?
It's been closed down because of COVID, and then the winter set in, and we have very seldom ever used it in the winter. It's ready right now.
Do we have any demographics or statistics on how many people it's going to serve and how many kids in? Do we have any demographics or statistics on how many people it's going to serve and how many kids in particular?
No, I don't. EDA may have some of that stuff. I, I don't. We just know how many kids comes there and everything, and how many we have in that, some of the summer programs that we've had, uh, which of course, we didn't have summer programs over there last year. Uh, Shalom Zone, they used it the year before that, and, and then year, even years before that, for their summer programs too, because, uh, they don't have a playground, so we have a playground down there, and we have the ball field, and, uh. That's, that.
We done a survey to see what's going to fit on here and include the parking.
Yes, there's plenty of room for the, for the building and, and some off-street parking, diagonal parking.
Wouldn't it be important for us to find out who is going to use the building and get statistics about, you know, what the needs are before we build a, a facility?
I th- I think in the, the past of what's happening at the par- has happened at the park, and when they have an event, I think that's enough proof that the building can be used. There'll be no problem with it being used. That's, that's no problem. The, the building they got now is used, well, was used when we had it open, but it's just not big enough to do anything. A, a small birthday party, or maybe a small community meeting or something.
It's really an event center, not a place to have programs?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's big enough to have programs. We'll have programs in it, uh, and I've talked to the community, and, and I, what I've told them is, you know, my budget is, is stretched too, so they go, they go get volunteers to do some program. They have some free programs around. The Health Department will have some programs over there. Uh, once we get a building, then of course, we can go out and, and get those people. And I'm hoping this committee that they are forming will be in charge of that. So, I mean, I think it, it's going to be all right. I think what has happened, and even though it was a devil, it may have been a blessing. Because now the community, which had to be the number one thing, they're involved, and they want it to happen. I mean, we could go over and build a five million dollar building, but if the community is not involved, i- i- it wouldn't be worth building. But I think this building, and with the community, is going to support it and do things. And of course, there was a lot of things said last week that people didn't understand. One of my best friends that I've met, ah, she said, I wish we had baseball field lights. I said, we got them. So, what did I do Wednesday night? I went, turned the lights on and, and called this lady, and she came, and she came down. And she said, I didn't know they was here. I'd never seen them on. I said, well, the problem is, you, you got people, I'll give keys to s- two or three responsible people that will cut them on and off when they have an event or whatever. And they know that. The building the same way. We, we had a lady that did it. On any event, they would call the Civic Center, they would come and do their paperwork. We don't charge, but we do charge a deposit. She would go and unlock it. When they left, she would go, check it out, make sure it was there. And then, uh, she would call us and say, when they, when they come back, give them their deposit. So, it, 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 it will work, but the community, as I said, was a blessing when they come out and they have, uh, wanted to support it, and they want to use it. And I think they'll take care of it.
Councilwoman George, the current building is probably the size of this Roser area, and the ceilings are really low, and so, you know, you say programs, like if you want to have some kind of performance there or something, it's not conducive to that at all. And so, you need a larger building with a higher ceiling, and they use it currently as kind of a, a base for their community events that are often spread throughout the park. That's usually where the food is, and there's a shelter there where they have, you know, people eat on, at tables and that kind of thing, but, but the building's not, not good at all. It's, it's ready to go. We've known that, so.
And some of the things that were said is springtime things. The ball field, we haven't even fixed some of the ball, well, we started. Some of the ball fields in, in Triple Creek or whatever, because, you know, they just sit there through the winter. They're not used. So, in the spring, we go and start adding dirt to them, fix them up, and Clearview will be no different. There's dirt already ordered from West Tennessee, same dirt that we'll put on all the other fields. It's no, no different.
David, do you have any idea how much this building is, would estimate how much it would cost?
Well, I know we got in a, a price today. If you put a walking track in it, it's probably estimated about 2.3 million.
About without the upstairs?
Now, without the upstairs, we had talked about around a million, million-two. It just depends on, you know, what we add, and, you know, the parking out front's going to add a little bit to it. So, we won't know the exact number until someone tells me, this is what we want. You know, this will work. This will be good.
Get some plans.
You know, and then we'll.
Construct some plans.
I will go out. First, I will get a, uh, conceptual plan of it, what it's going to look like on the outside, probably brick halfway up, tin roof. I hope that'll be approved, the tin roof. Brick about halfway up or so far up, and then some kind of siding. Then the inside will all be painted. The floor will be a concrete finish, if you have something that, especially, you know, like they do at these hotels or whatever, they'll roll out carpet, walkways or stuff.
I don't, I, and, I think, I think what we ought to do, I, I think, I, I thought about this today, you know, we, we do a lot like earmark money, like John said, for fire departments, that we don't build for three years, we'll set $300,000 aside one year, next year, next year, next year. So, how about if we go in there, because you said something about, you know, 1.2, plus you got parking lot and everything like that, and, uh, how about if we go in there and set aside like 1.5 million for this project to do that? For now, I'm talking about for now. That way, we can get the plans drawn, we can do all that, and get all that done.
The only thing that, you know, I would say, we, we have four million dollars that's not earmarked for nothing. All I'm asking for is half of that. Whatever the building's going to cost, that money, all that money can be used, if nothing to extend the pla- playground equipment. And with the ri- uh, rising costs, uh, it's going to be, I think, a lot more than one, I hope it don't. But I believe it'll be a lot more than 1.2 or 3 million dollars. That's the reason why I want to earmark and set aside 2 million dollars, plus the fact, we got people that's going to donate. My thing is, let's do something. Let's earmark, just 2 million dollars, half of what's money that had even been designated for nothing.
Say donate, what are they going to donate, Mr. Alexander?
Uh, whatever we need, tables, chairs, equipment, you know, we had.
I'm talking about the way of the building.
Well, money.
Does this figure that we're discussing now, is it including the furniture or not?
No.
Just the building?
That's why we need at least 2 million dollars to start.
Now, the 2 million dollars for a one-story building, I think, would cover the, the interior tables and chairs and stuff. I think that would do it. Not, not a second floor.
Heating and air conditioning and all that?
The, the second floor, I mean, we built a shop. It's a lot different. It's a block, and you can go over it. It's going to be the same size. It was a little over 400. But that's been a few years back.
Is you asking to include the parking lot also?
Well, we hoping. I mean, that's what I'm saying, you know?
Don't have much of an estimate because we don't have a plan.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know actually what it's going to cost until we get a, we get a plan and a, and a good.
Shouldn't we start with that, getting a plan?
That's going to cost some money that I don't have in my budget.
That's the reason why I want us to earmark 2 million dollars. If we don't use it, be just like any other fund, you put it back to, well, this particular one is a little bit different. This money's got to be designated for something to be done by 2024. And if we don't have something designated to be done by then, and don't use the money by 2026, we lose it. Goes back.
That's, that is expected to change, because.
But as of right now, if you don't have something designated for that money by 2024.
That's the only time.
To do. And if, and if you hadn't done something and used that money by 2026, as of today, that money goes back. All the money that we don't use of that 4 million dollars go back.
I can assure you, we are not going to have any money going back. I can absolutely assure you of that, because the way the guidance is drawn, and we have, um, provisions in place so that we are not, I promise you, we are not in any danger of having any.
And I will promise you, if 2 million dollars is set aside for Clearview Park, we'll use every penny of it.
I'm sure you will.
Oh, yeah. No doubt about it.
Yeah, sure.
But, but then again, if we don't use it all, then we can put it back.
Exactly, exactly. But have enough for us to go ahead and get started and do something. The longer we wait, and you all know this, it's going, it's going to cost more.
But shouldn't we start with the plan?
You know it's going to cost more. So, what we need to do is have an insurance policy, if you will, of 2 million earmarked for Clearview Park. And we'll work within that budget that we have.
That's pretty much going to eliminate a second floor.
You won't. You won't.
We need a budget, see.
Susan, you going to say something?
Well, I guess there's not a formal motion on the floor, and when, I, I just want to clarify, so that we understand what's being asked. Do you want that money to be appropriated into Mr. Brown's? But I don't know what, when you say earmark it, I don't, I don't know, and maybe Ms. Nichols can help me out, what the mechanism is to.
Earmark, earmark is a term that's used when it's included within legislation, and so, it's not, that is not legislation. It has to be within legislation.
Well, whatever the proper term.
So, are you wanting to appropriate that? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Are you wanting to appropriate that money right now from the ARPA funds into Mr. Brown's budget for immediate use? So, that's in this year's budget?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Nichols, is that accurate?
Appropriating the money would be what we need to do. When, where, how, that's council.
And if they appropriate it into this year's budget, and it's not, obviously, we're not going to be able to use all that this fiscal year, does Mr. Brown have to have POs to be able to roll that over to next year, or how are we going to ensure that it goes into next year's? Whatever's not used this year, uh, July 1st goes into next year's budget.
When we set up the, or when we receive the ARPA money, we set that up in a totally separate fund for tracking purposes and reporting purposes to the federal government. So, it, it's over here in a fund all by itself. We can set up the account numbers for Clearview Park, and designate it that way. It would be totally separate from the general fund. It won't zero out every year. It would just, project completed.
Okay.
But, but, uh, is there any, uh, thing about what I just stated about the money had to be kind of, designated for something by 2024, and if we don't use it by 2026, could we lose it or not?
The requirements from the federal government are that the, all the money has to be allocated by December 31st, 2024, and fully spent by December 31st, 2026.
That I thought, okay, thank you.
They don't want governments just holding the money.
There's no reason for us to have that money when there's such a great need for it. Just 2 million dollars. That's all I'm asking.
Are you making a motion?
I am making a motion that, uh, we allocate, delegate whatever we need to do, 2 million dollars to Mr. Brown's budget for Clearview Park. Is that proper?
That's a proper motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aha.
Close. Motion carries.
And, and what I want everyone to understand by that motion, that means we'll have an ordinance to that effect at our next meeting, where it can be, because this is not a formal voting meeting. This just moves on to next week's agenda, so there will be an ordinance. I'm sure Ms. Nichols will get with Mr. Brown and, um, set up all those account numbers, and we will have an ordinance on the agenda next week.
And, and one other question. I don't know, you said we don't have to, but when it comes to, uh, taking the building down, is that something that the council had to vote on? Is that something Mr. Brown can do?
I think Mr. Brown wants direction from council on that and the community. I think that's what he asked for last week. He didn't, there was direction last week for him to go over and, and start tearing the building down, and I think he wanted direction. Is that what we really want to do? Because it can be used.
I, I spoke with the lady over to, uh, Shalom Zone today. I had a chance to meet her and talk to her at length. There are some programs and stuff that they can be doing, using, uh, while we're getting ready to do all this, so I wouldn't want us to just tear it down, you know, right away. But I, I want Mr. Brown to have the authority, uh, power, if you will, to say, now, we have all our plans, we've got all this, now we're ready to tear the building down.
I think once you have plans and construction is ready to begin, you won't have a choice really but to tear that building down, and that's when that will occur.
Okay, all right.
The, the only thing I, I would say is, is like, like just a show of hands, they don't mind a boat, a boat mostly, but no, no sooner than 30 days before construction starts on the new building.
Have to come up with a plan, don't you, first?
Before the construction starts to tear the building down.
Oh.
I'm talking about before we start digging.
This isn't a voting meeting, so I think that when you come back with the committee, with the plan, I think that's the appropriate time to, to really discuss that. And, and get direction from the community and from the council on, on that.
David, are you going to plan this in the house, or are you going to hire somebody to, to the plans?
No, we'll have to hire an architect, engineering company.
Has to be engineered plans.
I, I, I could put it up for sticks or whatever.
No, I mean, are we going to, are we going to engineer it in-house here?
No, we will not, no.
Not, not our own building. I don't think it's wise to do our own building in-house.
But, but at least this is a, a start.
But David, it'll have, it'll have to go through planning and everything, correct? David, it'll have to go through planning commission and everything, right?
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
Any use of the ARPA funds, uh, will have to follow all the federal procurement guidelines, and they're very strict.
Yes. The next question is, this playground, are we going to go ahead and order it, since you got the money to get it? Are we going to go ahead and order it and? It won't be that color. I was just giving everybody the, the thing. That was the closest thing to our money that we could get, the most we could get for our money. I'm telling you now, if you order it right now, you might get it in a year, because I'm waiting on the daycare to get one, so. Yeah, it, it'll take about eight to 10 months or longer to get, to get one installed.
Anything.
Will we have where the building's going before we install the playground?
Oh, yeah, but it's going to be, the playground's going to be on down the hill. It will not interfere with the, the building in any way. It's going to be on down the hill.
Got the ball rolling, so that's.
Just one other thing, since I'm up here. If anyone here that wants to see the floor plan and the playground, I have copies, and I'll be more than happy to give it, but we don't want to disturb this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Moving on to the agenda, item number four, ordinance 02203-12, Mr. McCord.
Bill McCord, City Planner, and, uh, we have several items tonight. The first one is a request for rezoning of 14.67 acres, and this property is located on, center, we- uh, west of Center Street, north of DeMoss. Again, this, this laser pointer doesn't actually work on that TV screen, so. And what the applicant wants to do is rezone this property from R10 zoning to RAPRD, and to develop a single-family subdivision with 52 lots, and, uh, there'll be a substantial open space that would be provided adjacent to East Camp Creek, as well as some retention basins that will be included in retention ponds. It will extend a couple of the streets there that you see in the darker gray pattern on the screen, uh, through there, and each of the lots, of course, will have frontage on those, uh, new streets that would be constructed. This is a contour map, um. There will, because it's adjacent to existing single-family, there will be buffer yards that will be provided, uh, adjacent to the existing development. They will be using the creek and the natural vegetation that currently exist on the west side, uh, for the buffer yard there. All that area that you see there that's in gray and the hatch pattern on the left and the top part of the screen is in a flood zone. So, all the lots will not be located in a flood zone, so they will not, not need elevation certificates. The architecture of the homes will be, as you see here, uh, they will be required to have 40% of brick or stone facades on the fronts of the homes, and the rear and sides of the homes would be, uh, constructed with vinyl materials, uh, or other materials other than brick or stone. constructed with vinyl materials or other materials other than brick or stone. Most of the houses will have a leased-in-one-car garage. There was one model there that does not have a garage, and that would be parking in the driveway and, as opposed to parking in, in a garage and/or driveway. The planning commission reviewed this. It went through a couple of iterations of the planning commission.
Bill, I don't hate to interrupt, but it's, we're having trouble hearing.
Way too noisy.
All right. Okay, so the planning commission did review this, and it went through a couple of iterations through committee meeting as well as the regular meeting. And after these changes were made to address the architecture primarily, the applicant gave, got a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. So the planning commission is recommending for this zoning change and master development plan for what they currently call the Holland property. I'm, I'm sure it'll have a different name eventually, but...
We have a motion and a second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, ordinance 02203-13, Mr. McCord.
Okay. Actually, this next item I'm going to present, I have it's five and six together. And this is an unusual situation here that we have with the de-annexation request as proposed by the city, the city staff, and somewhat endorsed already by the city council. Coupled with that is a plan of service amendment. So there was a plan of service created many years ago on this property in conjunction with a larger annexation, which also included this property. So I'll describe these together. This is a request to de-annex this area, which is part of the old Avondale community, which is on the north side of the CSX railroad tracks, north and west side of the CSX railroad tracks, and outlined in the area in the red line that you see on the photograph there on the screen. It comprises an area of 34, about 34.7, excuse me, 34.7 acres. And the property is all zoned R20 and has been zoned that way for a long time. There are currently three houses in that portion of Avondale community that are in the city of Gallatin. Right now, the Gallatin city limits in relation to this property is to the east and south. So south and east of the CSX railroad line is in the city of Gallatin. Of course, that road you see there that extends from the lower left to the east side or the right side of the screen is Highway 31. And the big bridge that goes across and from the bottom to the top, in the middle of the photograph, is Highway 386. Of course, when this property was annexed back in 1971, it was a corridor annexation that extended all the way from about where Kennesaw Farms is, all the way out to Chute's Lane at Highway 31, 800 feet on either side of the road. So it was just a big strip, and they said, okay, 800 feet on this side of the road and 800 feet on that side. It didn't take into consideration any parcel boundaries or the railroad track or any other natural features, creeks and things like that, or highways. So it's been in the city a long time. Things have changed a little bit since it was originally annexed. When it was originally annexed, there was a railroad crossing roughly where the western boundary is, and you can kinda see that on the photograph there, about, just to the west of where Chute's Lane now intersects. Now, Chute's Lane was moved over to the east a little bit when they built the freeway. So it roughly aligned with Chute's Lane, and it was like a one-lane gravel road crossing over the railroad tracks, and then went up and joined Avondale Road, which is the roadway that's, uh, comes in from Hendersonville. The Avondale Road is, it's about 700 and some odd feet. That's, that road is in the city. Immediately to the west of this property is a part of the Avondale community that's in the enclave, if you wanna call it that, of the county. It's wedged between Hendersonville and Gallatin, small section. And then west of there on over to Saundersville Road is in Gallatin, and it's a light industrial area. So what happened when, roughly the time that the freeway was constructed, the, the railroad crossing was closed, and access to these, these, let's call it half of the property west of the freeway, was isolated from the rest of the city. So to get to this property, you have to travel into Hendersonville and then double back and come back up Avondale Road just to get to the, the west boundary of the city now, which is about one point, a little over, almost one and three-quarter mile, let's say. That's, means that this area is just isolated from the rest of the city, particularly with the freeway construction. And then the section there, uh, east of the freeway and north of the railroad is also isolated. Now, there is some farm roads with some essentially tunnels that go under the railroad track behind the Sumner County Tourism House there. But it's a substandard type of road. It's, I think it's even narrower than what you have at St. Blaser Road. So because things have changed, conditions have changed here, development is now occurring rapidly, not just in Gallatin, but obviously in Hendersonville as well. So you may recall that we had a change in the urban growth boundary, and it went before the city council a couple of times. So this was what the previous urban growth boundary was, and Gallatin's represented by the pink color, coral color, or whatever it is. And the dark blue is unincorporated areas of the county, including the, that section I was talking about in Avondale. And the light blue is the city of Hendersonville. So it, city Hendersonville almost engulfs around Gallatin, or Gallatin has a, an appendage that sticks into Hendersonville, and then a few unincorporated areas. So that's what it was before y'all made a change to the urban growth boundary. And as a result of changes you made to the urban growth boundary, that area in the gray is that 34, uh, 30, 34.7 acres that we're recommending that be de-annexed. So what we have is a de-annexation ordinance, unlike what we normally entertain. We used to annex by ordinance, but now we annex by resolution, because they're all petitions by the property owners to annex. But when you de-annex, you have to de-annex by ordinance. And so, as I mentioned earlier, we have a resolution that created a plan of service for this strip out here, including that area that we're considering de-annexing. So we're amending that plan of service just to not include the parcels. There's six of them here in the rightsway adjacent to them that we would recommend that you, because of actions you've taken about the urban growth boundary, to move forward with de-annexing that property. So this did go to the planning commission. The planning commission wants the city to consider essentially polling the neighbors or the residents in this area, I should say, and to get their opinions as to whether or not they are interested in de-annexing. Now, the statute is set up in a process, and Susan clarified this as well, that cities would then take action to de-annex, and if the residents wanted to challenge that, they have a certain period of time that they can then submit a petition. And that petition, if it's submitted properly and in a certain period of time, would then be able to call for an election, election, I would assume, just of the people who are affected. And that those folks would then, at the next scheduled election, would have the opportunity to vote after the city has already adopted an ordinance. If they voted to stay in the city, then the, essentially, the ordinance would be nullified, so. Is that correct? Yes, ma'am.
Do you know if any of the, or I would ask, or if any of the affected property owners are here this evening?
I, I don't know. A gentleman got up at our last meeting.
Yeah, if there's someone here, you can raise your hand.
So I have spoken with two people, and the gentleman that spoke, last time I spoke to him on the phone, and I spoke to another lady a couple of weeks ago about this. We sent letters out. We didn't, we didn't send letters out to necessarily poll them on their opinion, but just to inform them of what is transpiring.
So with your feedback, Bill, do they wanna stay in, or are they all covered?
They didn't reveal their, I guess they didn't have enough information at that time.
And, and, and back when we discussed changing our urban growth boundaries, I know the discussion was had. I don't know if it was by you and me individually, or if we had it as a council, but I thought it was very important to have conversations with those property owners and let them know what the circumstances would be, and make sure that they weren't up in arms about it and that they were some way okay about it. I really thought we had done that before we changed urban growth boundaries. But nonetheless, I do think that, I mean, I'm happy to call and have a conversation with them. I think, you know, we do need some one-on-one contact with them to make sure that they understand, you know, you're not gonna be paying city property taxes anymore, but you're not gonna have city tax, I mean, you're not gonna have city services. You won't be paying a garbage fee, but, you know, you'll probably come out ahead financially if you're hiring private trash. And we have, this council needs to know this too. We have, they have contacted the Sumner County Highway Department to let them know that we're essentially abandoning a road that's currently in the city. But beyond that, I mean, it, it does totally make sense. We all agreed to it when we, you know, discussed it back when. But I do think we have to be very considerate of the people impacted and make sure that they are on board before we go. Now, if they're not, and we aren't comfortable doing this, then we're gonna have to go back and change the urban growth boundaries, because they can't exist in conflict. So, but anyway, that's just the, the, what I wanna make sure that you have in your mind is we contemplate this.
Well, that's just what I was gonna say. I, I, I'd really like to hear from, how many houses you say is out there, Bill? Three or four?
There's three houses.
I'd really like to hear from two or three of them to be sure they're okay with this.
There's three houses, but six lots altogether, right? Isn't that right, Bill?
Yeah, that, well, the bulk of the property is owned both on both sides of the freeway. Uh, let's see here, maybe the photograph is better. Uh, the bulk of the property, certainly all of it on the east side of the freeway, north of the railroad course, is owned by Rogers Group. And then more than half of it on the west side of the freeway also is owned by Rogers Group. So these lots are very small. They're less than, mostly, I think most of them are less than an acre.
Is all these lots accessible? Is any of them landlocked? Are we gonna change any of that by de-annexation?
Well, they're only accessible through going from Hendersonville through the county and then back into Gallatin. They're not accessible from the rest of the properties that are in Gallatin. So you have, you have to literally, there's a couple of ways you could do it, I suppose. If you were, let's say a fire truck was coming from Nashville Pike, from the station there of Allstate. It would have to go past Chute's Lane and possibly either up the entrance ramp, onto the freeway, and immediately off the ramp, the circular ramp at Saundersville Road, and then turn and go in through and kinda wind its way, and I don't, it doesn't show here on this, it may show on the next.
Or they can go up to Saundersville Road and go over the railroad track.
And so they turn left and then make a, an immediate right, and then wind their way back in there. Or they could go down to where the Speedway in Thorntons is, and turn right and go across the tracks, probably wanna avoid that if they could, because of the railroad tracks.
Susan, is it possible that we could put this off for 30 days and get you to send those three homeowners a letter? Just asking them, do they have any concerns? Is that possible?
Of course. If that's what this council wants to do, anything's possible.
I don't think any of them's gonna care, to be honest with you, but I would like to hear from them, just to be sure, and let's notify them, just be sure that they don't.
Are you, you want, you want me to contact them by letter and ask them to contact me?
Please, please. I think that's the best way to do it. Is that, is that agreeable? Is that what it is?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it in form of a motion.
Second.
Got a first and a second.
Can I, can I just clarify that it's for agenda items five and six, correct?
We have a motion from Mr. Overston. We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number R2203-30, number seven, Mr. McCord.
Okay, similar to the last item, I'm gonna present seven and eight together. These are two different resolutions. This is for annexation, not de-annexation. This is an annexation also requested by the city. And this annexation is shown in this aerial photograph outlined in red there. And you'll see this represents an area of Big Station Camp Boulevard right-of-way. It does not include any private property. It's all public right-of-way that we would be annexing. It comprises about .7 miles long from just south of the 386 interchange at Big Station Camp, southward to what is currently the city limits, about where the driveway is to Rogers Field. I think most of you weren't aware, all of you know where that is, which is a soccer field that's down there in the flood zone. So I think most of you know the history of this road. It was in the Hendersonville urban growth boundary, and they had to move it out of their urban growth boundary and de-annex it to make it even available for the city to pursue annexation of it. Of course, all of the rest of Big Station Camp Boulevard, all the way up to Long Hall of Pike, and in, including the little section of, from Rogers Field down to Highway 31, is in the city of Gallatin and is served by city facilities, emergency service, streets and, uh, streetlights and that thing. So this is the only part that's not in the city. And y'all remember how terrible shape it was in and how long it took to get all the jurisdictional aspects straightened out. Well, they have been straightened out, and now that the road has been improved and all paved recently and is in good shape, I'm told, that the city of Gallatin is looking to...
Most of send it on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's for both items, right?
Seven and eight.
Ordinance number two, 02203-15, Mr. McCord.
Okay. This next item is a request to approve an amended preliminary master development plan. We require an ordinance. The proposal is to build a hotel on a vacant lot that's part of the Lowe's master plan. So it's amending the Lowe's master plan. The Lowe's master plan was approved quite a long time ago. Whoops, let me get that back to the photograph. And of course, the Lowe's store was constructed. There was a tire store constructed. There's a condominium development that was approved, not recently, last summer, to the south of the Lowe's. And then the Dutch Brothers Coffee Shop, it was recently constructed up in front of the Lowe's, up on Highway 31. So this vacant lot's been here for a while. It's really, as you can see in the photograph, has a lot of bear soil. It's really rock in there. And it's an area that was excavated when they built the Lowe's. So there's an escarpment that's just east of Brown's Lane, which is the roadway in the left center that goes from the bottom of the screen to the top of the screen. And it sits down a lot lower than Brown's Lane. So I wouldn't say it's a hole, but it is substantially lower than Brown's Lane. It was approved for a 20,000 square foot of retail, so an out parcel building for retail use. And the applicant wants to construct a four-story hotel on the property as opposed to general retail. It would be surrounded by a parking area, and there'd be a fence also, particularly a fence that would extend along the west boundary, uh, on the top of the escarpment. The drainage system for the hotel is already constructed as part of the Lowe's master plan. The planning commission reviewed this request. It'd be a 71,876-square-foot four-story hotel. And of course, it'd have landscaping. There's the architecture that they approved. It would be EPAS material and some stone, but primarily EPAS material. There, under the, these plans, it would be designated as a Staybridge Suites Hotel. The planning commission did recommend approval of this.
Bill, did you have anybody at the planning commission that's speaking for or against it?
No one spoke against it.
Bill, this is, this, the piece of property that joins that, that's the one that was, uh, that really brought the citizens out that lived around that area. That's the ones that we approved condos for.
That's right.
This is, this is the property down in the hole, but Jimmy said, you said there was no citizens or people around the area that come and protested that, correct?
Uh, I don't believe so. Our minutes are not complete for that meeting yet.
Nobody, nobody complained about it.
I don't believe that there was.
Most of the senate council.
I have a question. The size of that, is that, four stories just sounds awfully high.
Yeah, but it, it would be, the planning commission did recommend an exception as part of the overall recommendation. The building is going to be 50 feet. The code allows for up to 40 feet. The code allows for up to 40 feet, I believe. So, being down in a hole, if you will, what you're going to have is only see the top stories from Brown's Lane. And if you're down at Lowe's in their parking lot, you'll see a four-story building that's 50 feet high. But if you're driving along or walking along Brown's Lane, you're not going to see the bulk of the height of the building. So, it won't extend above the maximum building height along the Brown's Lane frontage.
Gotcha.
Is there somewhere some kind of rendering of what it might look like? Because I, I mean, I've looked online and there, I don't know if it's all the same brand, but it's the same name and some of them.
Never heard of it.
Not other than these drawings that they.
Could you ask for something before next week, Bill? See if they'll get you something.
Boy, ask them if they can, would you like a color rendering of it?
Please.
Is there a photograph of maybe another hotel they built?
Yes, sir.
Like this one?
I'd like to see what it's going to look like from behind, too. A lot of people travel Brown's Lane.
Yeah, I mean, you got that big hole right there. They wonder if they're going to backfill it right there, if they're going to build a retainer wall or clean that up.
Now, keep in mind, this is just a preliminary master plan. It's not the final. They will have a drive aisle behind that can circulate around the building, and that drive aisle will be down much farther below, so you probably won't even see it from Brown's Lane.
You're saying it's always going to be stucco?
The Ephesus material.
Yeah, that's stucco.
Primarily.
Drive it.
But stone and, or brick on that other picture, you could see the shading was different.
Double stars the company, though. It's, I think it's a Staybridge Suites now that.
Yeah, that's what it's named.
What's the name of it?
Staybridge, but again, lots of different looks, so.
See if they can get us something what theirs is going to look like here.
All right, we got a motion and a second?
We do. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Resolution number R2203-27, Mr. Tuttle.
Good evening. If you don't mind, I'll bring up 10, 11, and 12 together. They're all recommendations for public improvement acceptance for Elk Acres 3B, 4, and 5. And I would just like to make one comment because you guys probably wonder why we do what we do here, and it actually is somewhat unique, I found. Just last week at the surveyors conference, the state surveyors conference, Brian Reifschneider attended, and they, he had, he didn't bring this up, but another surveyor brought up the fact that there weren't very many cities that, that did the acceptance process the right way. But Gallatin was actually the, the only city that was singled out for doing things the right way from a legal standpoint and having a resolution for acceptance and also having a quick claim deed that's, that's required. And so, I didn't come up with that, but it's something that we've done for a long time, and I thought you might like to know that we're being bragged on by.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Over hundreds of.
It's nice to hear, it's nice to hear once in a while, so thanks for sharing that.
Uh, but, but this includes portions of Campbell Avenue, Savannah Avenue, Cali Avenue, Ryan Avenue, Nisi Avenue, and Leah Court.
Motion, Senate, all in favor.
Second.
We have a motion, first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. 10, 11, and 12, right?
11, 12, and 13.
It's 10, 11, 12.
10, 11, and 12, sorry.
Yes. I also have number 13. And number 13 is, we've included in your packets our recommendation for the remaining about $875,000 that we have for our paving budget. I hope you have seen the list and maybe even had a chance to review these streets. We did complete our citywide review with the consultant that we had hired to do that, and you can see the, the PCI, which is the paving conditions index that they assigned to these streets. And these are essentially all the worst streets that we have, and we're already programmed and ready to come forward with another million dollars, and we'll have it to you probably in May so that we can be ready to go July 1, expecting that our, our budget will contain at least that amount. So, the, these are the streets that we're recommending right now. If you'd like to approve now, we're good to begin scheduling that with Rogers Group and hopefully get them started in the next few weeks.
We have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor. All opposed. Motion carries. Resolution number R2203-34, Ms. Nichols.
Good evening. This is a resolution that would allow us to refund some more of the water sewer bonds that we talked about last fall. Last fall, we presented the possibility of refunding the, some 2011, 2014, and 2015 bonds. And at the time when we actually did that refunding, only the 2014s gave us a monetary advantage. Now, there are some 2011 issues that will generate savings for us. We'll have an initial savings of approximately $300,000, and then we'll see a, an anticipating savings of $100,000 per year for the remainder of the life of those bonds in interest savings. And so, this is just a request to do that refunding.
Motion approved.
We have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Resolution R2203-35, Mayor Brown.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution asking for support by this council for a 2022 community challenge grant application with AARP. There are no matching funds from the city of Gallatin. The proposal that we are applying for, based upon the recommendations, which include building upon an existing event and it not being something that would require ongoing funding. Jeff and the people that he has worked with, Mr. Henshaw, is suggesting that we cooperate, collaborate with Historic Downtown Gallatin, who is building on their Third Thursday success and starting a First Friday, which is more of a vendor outdoor on the square type activity. They do not have a musical component, but by us realizing this grant, we could provide the musical component. And we know that Third Thursday largely applies to that kind of AARP population, and so we think that this is a good opportunity to continue serving that population and maybe even gear it even more towards them and have them have an opportunity to be on our historic square and enjoy in a new way throughout the summer. So, that's what the application's for. May or may not be successful, but we're going to give it a whirl.
We have a motion approved. We have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 16, ordinance 02203-14, Mr. McCord.
Actually, you want to introduce Mr. Harris? Do you want me to? Okay. Actually, Matt Harris, who has been serving on our Gallatin Planning Commission for several years now, and has been working very, very hard. There were some real heavy lifts. I, I don't know if any of you, I know certainly Ms. Love has been dug in with the Planning Commission since she serves on there. But I've been watching the meetings, and, and there's been a lot of hefty lifting done by that body. But I'd say there are certainly a few individuals that stand out as doing the lion's share of that, and Mr. Harris would be one. And so, he's going to present to us this evening in a brief form, the Plan Gallatin proposal to this council. I, again, would re, just kind of revisit our plan when we started this journey, that we were going to hopefully come up with a plan that both bodies could support. This is the vision for the future of Gallatin, and we want it to be bold, but we also want it to be one where it respects our community's character, and if we, we have parameters so that we can preserve to some degree what that is while we still manage the growth that we are being, having forced upon us. But, a, and, and I think, as I've looked at the plan, there's some places in this plan where I feel like we could have a bolder vision, and there are some places in this plan where I feel like it's locked down pretty tight. But I'm okay with that because I think that having some of those areas locked down pretty tight means that if a developer really wants to do something, they're, they're going to have to bring us something very compelling and, and something that, you know, we can get the support in the community to change. So, this is an update to an existing plan. We have had Gallatin on the Move 2020 for, since 2008 about, and so this is going to be an update to that plan. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for the chance to talk a little bit tonight about the Plan Gallatin project. So, this project's been going on now for several years.
It feels like a decade, doesn't it?
It, it feels like it's been a part of the conversation in all three years of my service on the Planning Commission. So, the, oh, so, as many of you know, the state law requires that the city adopt a comprehensive growth plan, and we've been operating under the Gallatin on the Move 2020 plan since 2008. And then the last few years, working on a revision to that called Plan Gallatin. So, over the last few years, this plan has gone through many reiterations. It's gone through public comments, community events, received feedback from numerous people from the planning commissions to the city council, department heads. And, and all of that information, I'm going to say, Rosemary can correct me, it was probably in the last, about six months ago, we started really kind of getting all those things combined and into an actual document that we could start working through. The Planning Commission then took that feedback, and actually, we spent many hours over numerous meetings going through Plan Gallatin page by page. So, rather than just giving it a quick glance, we took all the feedback from the department heads and the comments that had been received from the joint session with Planning Commission and City Council. And, and we actually put all that information into a spreadsheet and went through line by line and discussed every comment and talked about where it made sense, how it fit into the plan and to the vision, to make sure that we, we came back to City Council with a comprehensive document that accomplished the objectives. And so, so at the end of your packet, I think tonight's packet's 568 pages long, about the last 100 pages of that is actually the Plan Gallatin document. And, and one of the things I'm going to ask, it may be a little unique from how we've looked at other ordinances and moving things forward, is I'd like to ask that we provide each member of the City Council a printed copy of the Plan Gallatin document. And that way, you guys can take that, read it, make some notes in it, and have something that's easier to digest than trying to read it on a, just on a computer screen. That's something we did with the Planning Commission. We found it very valuable. And so, by giving you a chance to look at that, when it comes back for a first reading, I'd like to come back to you and have a little more formal presentation with some of the key highlights that are in the plan, and then potentially have a conversation about why some of the things are in there the way they are and how the Planning Commission arrived, with that being a good way to present this to you. Something to think about Plan Gallatin that is a little bit unique is things, the things to focus on when you read that, pages 73 through 83 focus on community character areas and the density and types of uses for those areas. So, when you get into the plan, you're going to see some maps. It's got some examples of types of uses for those areas and how they should be incorporated into the city. And then, starting at page 90, the plan starts talking about next steps. And what Plan Gallatin really is, it is the vision for the growth of the city of Gallatin. And next steps, after the, the plan is adopted, it's really the beginning of, of a lot of work. Finalizing urban growth boundaries, developing land use regulations, zoning ordinances, talking about a form-based code for the downtown area, and really discussing in depth how that downtown area is going to get redeveloped and what we want that vision to be. And so, neighborhood and functional plans, and then get into mixed use and major thoroughfare type plans. So, one of the things that is in, in the resolution to pay attention to is, one thing that the Plan Gallatin did not do, maybe the way that Gallatin on the Move 2020 had, was the major thoroughfare plan. So, the, the planning departments asked that, in addition to adopting the plan document itself, is to retain the planning document from Gallatin on the Move 2020, which was chapter four, which is the mayor, major thoroughfare plan. And that will give engineering, it'll allow them to continue using the guidance from the existing thoroughfare management plan until a new one's adopted. So, if we don't do that, we're not going to have a thoroughfare plan to follow, and that could be a interesting situation. So, in addition to that, the other, the other item that is in there is, discusses the Nashville Pike corridor overlay plan and the Nashville Pike access plan. And so, when you, when you read those documents, take a look at that, and that's something we're going to want, we'll want to talk about. With that, any questions?
So, this is not a final plan just yet? It's still being changed somewhat, but you're going.
That's up to you.
I understand that.
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor Fennell. The, the Planning Commission has recommended that Plan Gallatin be approved by the City Council, so it's the recommendation of the Planning Commission that it be approved. However, there, it's perfectly within your authority to, to ask for changes to that plan.
I understand that, but are you guys still tweaking the plan yourself?
No, sir.
No, they passed it.
No, we've, we have passed it and are recommending approval.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have had concerns about basically being considerate of the Planning Commission's work on this. And so, if this council goes down the road where there are a lot of changes that I think will cause heartburn for the commission, I want to act as a go-between and just communicate with them what those changes are that this council's making and see if they can live with them or if they can't. And if we have a lot of conflict, then I'll probably say, folks, we need to have a joint meeting. But if we don't have a lot of conflict and they're okay with where, you know, the changes may or may be going, I won't see any reason for that. But I just, again, I really want this to be a plan that both bodies feel good about, and I will continue to.
Or is it possible for you to do what Matt said and let's get us a book with this laid out so we can make notes and stuff on it?
Now, some of the character area maps, they are better to look at online because there's a little more maneuverability, so.
And what do we need, I mean, how long does everybody want to be able to look at this before we put it back on our work session? A month?
Yeah, I'd say probably a month, yeah. I mean, to look at it, study it, yeah.
If you can get us, if we can get a book within a week or so, then we'll put it back on.
They're just going to look at it online, though, right?
So, you, you could potentially pass it to first reading on that April 5 date that we had talked about.
But is spring break, because there's a lot of public involvement in this, is that going to conflict with any of these?
I think spring break is in March. I have no clue.
It's next, next, Sundar County's next week.
Spring break is next week.
Well, April, I mean, bringing it back and talking about it on April 5th, is that, that's a work session, is that, Council? We need back at a work session, I guess, so work session after that.
He wanted to do the formal presentation at first reading, I mean, just for, I guess, exposure and, and, but do you, I mean.
I, I don't have a preference.
Oh, you don't have a preference?
If you want to bring it back to a, for a work session, that's perfectly acceptable.
I think that's where it's appropriate, though, really, to make a presentation at a work session and then we make changes before.
Do you want to do that, the, the, well, that, that would be just, because there's a fifth Tuesday in March, that would be just to.
Let's do it the week after.
April 12.
The 12, April 12.
April 12 work session.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. It'll give us time to read it.
Okay, at that point, we'll have the information to read.
Yeah, she's going to give that to us, or somebody's going to give that to us within a week or so.
Yeah, that's.
We could do it online.
You, you could review the information online. What, what we found with.
Make notes and stuff?
Well, we, yeah, what we discovered with the Planning Commission is.
I have, yeah.
Yeah, once we provided a printed copy in a three-ring binder, it was much easier as a group to talk about it when you could flip to a page, see it, you could make notes in it.
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking about a document that's, you know, roughly 100 pages long, and that's really hard to, to flip back and forth on an online book when you're trying to have a discussion about something so important.
Some pages open and they're together this way when you open the book, and there are separate pages online, and it's not, it's, it's not as cohesive.
Correct, yeah. It's, the, the plan is designed to be read with the pages open, so there's sections of it where you have to be able to see both pages at the same time to understand the information.
Right.
And that was, that was something that we found confusing in our work sessions. And once we got printed copies to all the members, it, it really did help. So, I would, I would suggest get the printed copies, spend some time digesting it, and then next work session, I'll come back and, and talk to you more about it. Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get the copies next week.
We have a motion?
You don't have to if it's just come back to work session.
We don't have to if it's coming back.
Cooper Creek, yeah.
We have the two backfields lit. The two frontfields are not lit.
Are there any plans in the future to light those parts?
We have just got estimates to light those and. We have just got estimates to light those and it could be coming back to you.
You don't have any money in your budget to do that? Okay.
Be about $400,000 to do that, two fields.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Brown.
I have one thing. I misspoke at the beginning, beginning of the meeting and I want to clarify. I talked, I've talked about the community workshop at the Shalom Zone. There is a community workshop at the Shalom Zone, but it is not about the Shalom Zone. It's about Habitat for Humanity. And so, again, that is on March 16th. It's from 4 until 7 p.m. and at Shalom Zone, but about Habitat for Humanity. Again, they, another organization that has some bold vision for the future, and they would love your input. Also failed to mention that the stamp show is happening at the Gallatin Civic Center, and that's on the 19th and 20th, if you'd like to check it out.
Any other business?
Steve, just one thing. Mayor, will you, will you address that email that we got that somebody brought up at first of the meeting? We are addressing that situation and trying to work on it, the parking situation at.
Oh, at Christian Towers, yes. I, I know, just, just for y'all's information, I don't know if you read the email or not, but Mr. Overton's been in touch with one potential alternative, and I am to get in touch with another potential alternative. It was the city, first of all, it's not the city building the garage, we all know that. And we did not negotiate it nor choose the location. And we thought that the provisions had been made to accommodate the people during the parking. My first exposure that they had not was with the Gallatin day, not Gallatin, Church of Christ daycare workers. And so we've had to navigate that, but I had absolutely no idea that they did not have parking for the Christian Towers people. So we are going to, Mr. Overton and I are going to meet with some people and figure out what we're going to ask the county for to be able to lease some property for the parking, if we can all get an agreement on it, but certainly.
And I think some of that property is creating a conflict for the senior citizen as well, whether you're coming in.
That was, that was something that Mr. Overton was exposed to, to. But I will say that as we all navigate this together, we all need to support one another. Not meaning we as individuals, but this is his town, town, because it's hard right now, but it will be better in the long run, so.
Any other business? Department heads?
Hello, I'm Rosemary Bates with the Economic Development Agency, but I'm here on behalf of the gun range. I wanted to let you know that after reviewing the contract with Scotty's Contracting for the gun range, it was clear that they had to remove all the spoils at their cost, even if it meant doing a burn pit, they had to absorb that cost. So we are not spending $54,000 to do a burn pit. It's covered in the contract, and that has been happening. And Richard DePriest has been keeping on top of what's going on out there. Secondly, there is a group of us, PD, Public Works, Engineering, me, Bill McCord at one of the meetings, seems like there's a sixth person, and I can't remember, oh, J.R. Smith. And we are going to be interviewing two architectural firms, one tomorrow and one next week, to design the pavilion with the bathrooms and the storage area. And only two firms responded that they'd like to be considered right now. It is very challenging to find an architectural firm to do small jobs like this one. So just letting you know that in terms of going through the federal government process of obtaining an architect to do your other building that you might want to look at. So I'm just giving you an update. It is moving forward. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Thank you so much for moving it forward, Rosemary. We've been talking about this a long time, and you grabbed it and run with it, so I appreciate it.
I'm just glad I could save you $54,000. That, that made me feel better, so.
Any other department head? We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
That's first and second.